Welcome, everyone, to the West Orange Reorganization Meeting. Happy New Year. The first order of business is the announcement of the results of the election. The election was held on November 7th, 2017. Two candidates ran for a one-three-year term. Ken Alper had 4,748 votes and Christopher Diaz had 3,980 votes. So at this time, I would like to swear in Mr. Alper. If you come to the podium, please.
Do you please raise your right hand and bid deals?
I, Ken Alper, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. So help me God. I, Ken Alper, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 194-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJHS 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
I also have this beautiful plaque from the Essex County Clerk that indicates that Ken Alper was duly elected as a school board member. Mr. Alper?
Present.
Mr. Charles?
Present.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Present.
Mr. Robertson?
Present.
And Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of the notice of meeting. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 6th, 2017, and January 2nd, 2018. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the Lobby Administration Building of the Board of Education. Okay, the floor is now open for election of a President. Nominations are now open for President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
Yes, Mr. Calavano. I'd like to make a nomination for Mr. Ron Charles to be President of the Board.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close nominations for President of Board of Education?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I will now take roll call. For Mr. Charles, President of Board of Education. Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Charles, President of Board of Education. One, now turn the meeting.
Next order of business is the election of a Vice President. Do we have nominations for Vice President? I would like to nominate Mr. Mark Robertson for Vice President. Are there any other nominations? Okay, we're closing nominations. Mr. Calavano, a vote, please.
Do we have a motion to close?
Yes. Motion. I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, second.
Okay, now I'll take roll call for Mr. Robertson for Vice President of Board of Education. Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Robertson, President, Vice President of Board of Education.
Sure.
Thank you. We're just going to present a plaque to Ms. Mordecai for her service as President for this last year from January through this meeting. So, Ms. Mordecai, thank you very much for your service.
Okay, Mr. Calavano, we have the next on the agenda is the designation of positions, D through, pretty much all the way through, through T. Let's just separate, let's separate out L for now, we'll roll over the ethics.
And letter S as well.
Okay. So let's, okay, yeah, let's separate F and L out, move all the other positions separately now, please. So do I have a motion to move the designation of positions without F or L?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Calavano, vote, please.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
No.
Oh. Vice President Robertson.
Wow.
Yes.
It's not even written on my sheet.
It's a habit.
It's a habit.
It's okay.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Okay. Let's handle Board Designations, letter F, please. Do I have any, I guess, anyone interested in being the delegate for New Jersey School Board Association?
Apparently, I am.
Yes.
That would be neat.
Mr. Albert, yes?
It's the rookie spot. We like it.
Do we have anyone interested in being the alternate? You know what, I'll take that spot. There we go. Okay, for the next is the Essex County School Boards Association.
I'll take that spot as I'm currently the President of the Essex County School Board.
That would be good, yeah. That makes a lot of sense, yeah.
So I'll take that, I'll continue in that role. Thank you.
Do I have anyone wishing to be the alternate? Mr. Schwartzbaum, it?
Sure.
Legislative Chairperson? Do we have anyone interested in being that, in that position?
I could have that.
Mr. Albert?
Sure.
There you go. Do I have someone to be the alternate? You know what, I'll take the alternate spot as well, so Ken and I can work together on those two. Okay, Negotiation Committee?
Mois.
Okay. Mr. Schwartzbaum, would you like to remain? Okay. Ms. Mordecai, would you like to be on?
Yes.
Okay, Policy Chairperson?
I'd like that spot, please.
I would like that spot as well.
Okay, so that's a two-person.
That's a two-person, yeah.
Two-person spot.
Okay, so, Mark and Sandra. Ms. Mordecai and Mr. Robertson. The township liaison?
I'd like that, please.
Okay, Mr. Albert seems a perfect fit for that.
Sorry.
Is there another spot for that?
Yes, two.
There are two spots.
So, I think Irv was on a list.
Irv is currently in that role.
Okay, let's keep Irv in that, please. Yes. Okay, the Public Relations Committee?
What, should we do that together?
Yes, we're gonna do it together?
All the, sure.
Okay. I'll be on as well. Okay. Mr. Charles and Mr. Robertson?
Okay. I thought you were also interested in that, Mr. Alper.
Um, if you need a third, sure.
If there's a third, then there has to be, um...
No, that makes it a quorum.
If there's a quorum, you'd have to notice every meeting that you have.
Okay, you know what, I will, as a President, because I'm de facto...
De facto member.
Put Ken in, and I will be as the de facto there.
There you go.
Mr. Calavano, do we have to vote now on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I need a motion to move the committees and associations and delegates?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any consideration or comments? Mr. Calavano, please, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Next item on the agenda that we need to address is letter L, is the Code of Ethics. I think if we just go, we start with Ms. Mordecai, we take two apiece, the first two right in order, that's just pretty much a simple way of doing it.
Yep.
Sure. Okay, letter L, adopt the following code of ethics as per NJHS A, 18A, colon, 12-21 ed sec, and West Orange Board of Education bylaws 9271.00. The members of the Board of Education recognize that they hold authority, not as individuals, but as members of the Board. In order to make a clear public statement of its philosophy of service to the pupils of the district, the Board adopts this code of ethics. Letter A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Letter B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
C, I will confine my Board action to policy-making, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them. D, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow Board members, to see that they are well-run.
We'll write down a line, I'll take E. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer.
I, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. J, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Mr. Calavano, we have to, okay. Motion to move the Code of Ethics?
I'll make a motion.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Alper, second. Okay, any discussion? If not, Mr. Calavano, let's vote, please.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Next order of business is Section 2 miscellaneous, and I read the opening paragraph. The Board has recommended approval of the following resolution in support of the restoration of the Federal Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals Program, better known as DACA. Do we have any discussion on that from the Board?
Only to say that I'm very happy we're making this decision, taking this step. It's important in terms of our values and protecting our children.
Agreed.
Agreed. Agreed.
Agreed on that. Okay, so, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Well, we need somebody to move it.
Oh, a motion.
I'll move it.
I'll move that resolution.
I'll second.
Mr. Robertson will second. Any further discussion? If not, Mr. Calavano, let's vote, please.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Though it's a small agenda, the next section is the petitions and hearings of the citizens. If anyone would like to speak, please come up to the microphone. You have three minutes. Please acknowledge your name and your address, and Mr. Calavano will look the clock for us.
Elizabeth Redwine, Ten Cobain Terrace. And be careful on the ice, I have this huge shiner, I don't, I'm not usually this tough looking, but, fell on the ice. But I just wanted to thank the Board for cooperating and dealing with my, I don't even know how many emails you poor people received from me in the past week, but thank you for responding and taking such a close look at that document. I think you've all understood how important it is for us to think about what kind of a school system we want to be and what kind of a town we want to be, what kind of a community we want to be. And we're so fortunate to live in such an immigrant-rich community. I'm so proud to have my children go to school with people where they hear all different languages every day, and they've gotten such an education that way. And I know my kids had heard some rhetoric from Washington and were afraid, so this kind of wonderful resolution, I think, really is a comfort to people in our town. And, you know, just starting out the new year to get this kind of response from the Board was a real comfort to me because you're probably going to hear from me some more. So, thank you so much.
Anyone else, please come up?
Good evening. Congratulations to our new member, and my name is Carol Ruiz, 98 Prospect Street, Dover, New Jersey. I am here in my capacity as co-president of Wind of the Spirit Immigrant Resource Center, and I'm also a Board Member in Dover, New Jersey, but I am not here on behalf of the Board, nor do I speak for the Dover Board. As many of you are probably aware, the New Jersey School Boards Association presented recommendations in the Student Achievement Task Force Report, and those recommendations encourage Board members to actively lobby and advocate to elected officials. It is our responsibility as Board members to ensure the best for our students. In passing this resolution in support of the Dream Act, you have courageously done that, and I commend you and the West Orange community for taking that step. It's an important step necessary now because the Dream Act, if and when it passes, is likely to pass on June 19th when the extension resolution expires and when we hope that the need for the 60 senators for the spending bill will allow room for the Dream Act to pass. In my capacity as a Wind of the Spirit immigrant rights advocate, I've been advocating for the Dream Act for 16 years, and I'm tired and sick of the situation we are putting our immigrant youth in. When I was a student, and just to reiterate how important this is, when I was an undocumented immigrant student in Dover, my senior year, I was a top student, and I dropped out of high school because, as an undocumented immigrant student, and this was before DACA existed and the Dream Act, before the Dream Act was even presented, there was no hope for me. I couldn't work because I wouldn't have any work authorization. I couldn't go to college. This was before the New Jersey Tuition Equity Bill, so there was no access to many of the state colleges, and certainly my undocumented immigrant parents, my mother, a stay-at-home mom, and my father, a welder, were not going to be able to afford the then-out-of-state tuition charge to undocumented immigrant students. I fell into a deep depression, and I tell you that I now see, as an immigration attorney, many of my clients also falling into depression, also flirting with the idea of dropping out, working as, whether it's contract work or domestic work under the table, so that they can help to support their families. You are not just doing the right thing for your students, but your entire community for the mental health of your community. In Dover, we have students who are traumatized, and one particular student was asked, "Well, why are you so upset? Why are you crying all the time? You're Puerto Rican, you're a U.S. citizen." And he said, you know, "My best friend, my boyfriend, my neighbor, they could all be deported." So this impacts all of us, our entire community, our entire state. We have the third-largest immigrant population in New Jersey, and of course, here in Essex County, we are rich with immigrants from all over the country. So I thank you and I encourage you to continue being so bold, to look at other opportunities to protect your students, such as the Safe School Zone Resolution, if you haven't already passed it here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Robin. I, 22 Yale Terrace. Wanted to congratulate Ken on his position and congratulate Ron and Mark on your new positions here. And I wanted to thank the Board as well for passing this really important resolution and for taking the comments that you heard from community members so seriously with this regard, and I look forward to seeing more action from the Board in terms of helping community members and their desires to strengthen this town. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Voy a hablar en español. Ella me va a traducir.
Good evening. I will speak in Spanish, and she will interpret for me.
Quiero decirles que hace cuatro años cuando DACA fue la primera vez, por primera vez...
I want to tell you that four years ago, when DACA was for the first time introduced...
Mi hija fue una de las primeras graduadas de esta high school con las mejores notas.
My daughter was one of the first DACA students graduating from this high school with top honors.
En el 2012, cuando vinimos a hablar con la consejera, en ese momento no estaba DACA.
In 2012, when we came to speak to the guidance counselor, DACA had not yet been implemented.
Teníamos que hablar acerca de the college, so no había posibilidades para ella.
We came to talk about college, and there were no opportunities for her.
El director de la escuela fue muy muy condescendiente con nosotros.
The principal of the school was very comforting to us and understanding of us.
Él nos dijo que de su cuenta corría que Paula estudiara, que no podía creer que por un papel una de sus mejores estudiantes no pudiera estudiar.
He stated to us that he would commit to ensure that my daughter Paula could achieve a higher education, and he was in disbelief that a simple piece of paper could prevent his top student from obtaining a higher education.
En 2013, ella se graduó, DACA ya estaba.
In 2013, she graduated, and now she had DACA.
Pasó a Seton Hall University.
She went on to Seton Hall University.
Después pasó a Moncler University.
And then to Montclair University.
En este momento ya está graduada, trabaja en JCC aquí en West Orange.
Right now, she's a graduate, and she works right here in JCC in Orange.
Fue, la escuela fue, el director de la escuela y la escuela en sí fueron muy muy buenos con nosotros. El Board of Education escribió una carta de recomendación para ella, increíblemente buena.
The principal of the school and the school community as a whole was very supportive of her. In fact, the Board of Education wrote a letter in support of her.
Esa carta la presentamos en Inmigración.
And that letter we presented in Immigration.
Y estoy segura de que van a seguir haciendo el mismo trabajo con los demás estudiantes que sean DACA, que son DACA. Mi hija fue una de las pocas estudiantes que en el 2013 se graduó bajo DACA. No sé en este momento cuántos chicos hay con DACA, pero por favor apóyenlo, de la misma manera que apoyaron a mi hija.
My hope and my belief is that you will continue to support other documented students the way you supported my daughter. She was one of the first, if not the first, to graduate from this school with DACA, but she's not the only one. I know there are other documented students here, and I don't know how many, but I hope that and encourage you to continue supporting them.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Mr. Rush, can you just enter her name for the record, please? That's okay.
Gladys Harris Mendy, 43, Warman Street, Moncler, New Jersey. Me moví este año.
Gladys Harris Mendy, from Moncler, New Jersey. I just moved this year.
I'm coming back.
Michael Cumberton? In October of last year, I was fortunate enough that that woman who just spoke agreed to marry me. I'd like to start off by reading a quote. "Each time a man stands up for an ideal or acts to improve the lot of others or strikes out against injustice, he sends forth a tiny ripple of hope, crossing each other from a million different centers of energy, and daring those ripples build currents that sweep down the mightiest walls of oppression and resistance." That was Robert Kennedy. By passing this resolution this evening, you gentlemen have helped to fulfill what he was talking about then. As I say, I married Gladys in October. I promise you, prior to that, I was not thinking about DACA, I wasn't speaking about DACA, I wasn't reading about DACA, and then I heard about her daughter and what was going on. And I'm the product of the New York City parochial school education system. Back in those days, most of my friends were black, Latino. I'm a first-generation Irish-American. My parents right off the boat. There's no difference between these people and the people that I grew up in, except that back in those days, the hatred was spoken in quiet, secluded tones. Now, they're treated with hatred on TV, in radio, in newspaper, in politics. This is not the country I grew up in. In some senses, it is, because hatred still exists, but it's different now. We speak about it bravely, almost. So, without going too much further, I want to thank you for passing the resolution. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. I guess I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is, I'm veering off the pedal, just gonna ask my colleagues if they want to comment on anything that the public had to say, because some of it was, I believe it's important, some of it's emotional, and something that we all, we all support, so I just want to get everyone's comments on that, just for the record. So, we'll start with Ms. Mordecai.
Sure. First of all, thank everybody for coming tonight, and I also want to start by welcoming Ken Alper to the Board of Ed. Ken, I'm looking forward to working with you to continue to move the district forward and to ensure that our decisions are student-centered while finding the balance as it relates to the tax burden. But going back to the public comments, Carol Ruiz, where did she go? I met you in Mars Town several months ago. Thank you for all your hard work. Keep it up. Yeah, DACA's tough. Most of you may know that I'm originally from Jamaica, and, God, if they had, all the...
chaos that's happening now back in the 80s, I don't know where, honestly, if I would be here. So, the rules were very different in 1980, and the process was lengthy, but very different. There weren't braids every day or every hour. So, hats off to you. It's a tough battle. Thank you for fighting it for 16 years. And good luck to you, Cumbertons, Mr. and Mrs. Cumberton, that was your daughter. I do wish you all the best. And as you said before, the Board of Ed supported you, and as you can see from the resolution that we passed tonight, that we support all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Albert?
I'd like to echo that. I'd like to thank everyone for coming and for making their comments, Elizabeth for the many, many emails, so that we could hammer it out and get it right and get it done. You know, it's, it's an on-point resolution that really speaks to a good portion of our community, and I'm happy that we're able to get that done for folks. Separately, I just want to thank everyone for coming out, but also thank my colleagues, all of whom, all four who have reached out to me separately between November and now, so that I could sort of hit the ground, if not running at least, at a decent jog. And Mr. Rutske, Mr. Calavano, and Ms. Mendez, and Mr. Santiago, and Liz Hughes, and Kathy in your office are all fantastic, getting me everything I need to also, you know, get moving. So, I'm happy to be here and look forward to working with everyone.
I just wanted to really congratulate all of us. As a first-generation American, I firsthand know the importance of allowing everyone an education, and as you said, the country was founded by immigrants, and it's so important, and it's really what makes our country so great and so different than the rest of the world. So, you know, it's very important to have, to voice our opinions so that the legislators from New Jersey can go to Washington and voice our opinion. So, thank you very much for bringing it up.
Also, as a first-generation American, my, my parents are both from Jamaica, and my dad, you know, literally was, was off the boat. And to echo what my colleagues have said, I mean, the value of education, being able to extend our arms to all of our children. Without my parents having had that opportunity, I wouldn't have had that opportunity. I wouldn't be able to pass that opportunity along to my children. And it's, and ironically, it's extending those open arms that really makes America great, and we don't need to be great again. We already are. Elizabeth, thanks for staying on top of us, and, you know, along with Shannon and Gina, and you had a whole crew there that made sure this stayed front and center, and thank you very much for doing that. That helps us to listen and to focus, because there's always so many things going on. So, thank you for doing that, and welcome, and thank you for speaking out. That takes a lot of courage, a lot of heart.
Okay, lastly, I just want to extend my welcomes to Mr. Alper for starting his career here on the Board of Education. I look forward to working with him. I also want to thank my colleagues for...
It's non-paying.
Yeah, it's non-paying.[1702.02][1702.02](LAUGHING). Mr. Schwartzbaum, quick, quick to point that out.
Do you guys have a cell phone?
Yeah. So, yeah, I just want to thank my colleagues again for their support in being selected President. I think we're, I look forward to work whenever we're on the Board, the administration, and Mr. Robertson as Vice President. I think we worked well a few years ago together, and I look forward to it again.
But, Jeff.
Yes, sort of. Okay.
Yeah, sort of.
So, I think we're off to a good start, a good year. I look forward to hearing from the public this year, and including the community, and a lot of the decisions and a lot of the policies and ideas that we set forth as a Board. So, before we conclude, I just want to make an announcement. The next board meeting will be held 6:30 PM, an executive session on January 10, 2018, at the Administration Building for the purposes of residency hearings. And at 6:30, the public session will be at 8 o'clock on January 22nd at the West Orange High School right here. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it, it's a wrap.